Chen Chen, I'd like to call the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three Republican Community of Fenton High School District One Hundred Board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Figueroa?
Here.
Aide?
Here.
Gobek?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Redzinski? Rego?
Here.
Tegolfo?
Here. We have the board. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, James, please read our offensive mission lyrics and Bison Way states.
Our mission statement cultivates successful, passionate, empowered learners through regular relevance and relationship. Our Fenton belief system, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaboratives, one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with the state-of-the-art facilities. We view social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way. Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect adversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. And Mary, do we have any requests for public comments this evening?
Yes.
Let's begin again.
Rangjana Rajendran?
Thank you. And just a reminder, real quick, our public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limit of the evening of thirty minutes total. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rangjana Rajendran, and I have been a teacher here at Fenton High School for eighteen years. A fellow FEA member who I'd like to tell you about is Linda Santinello in our math department. Linda and I actually have many students in common every year, and what I hear from them is that Ms. Santinello really cares about her students. She builds a classroom space that feels predictable and safe so that her students can focus on math. They know that Linda is going to help them build their confidence and competency in calculus. Her students are very fortunate to have such a dedicated teacher, and I consider myself lucky to learn from her. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract top teachers and have a collaborative learning environment that can help us keep and retain the best teachers like Linda during this time of teacher shortages. Thank you so much for serving on the board, and I appreciate your time.
Rachel Gentile?
Hi, my name is Rachel Gentile, and I've been a teacher here for five years in the Social Studies Department. A fellow FEA member I'd like to tell you about is Kelly Torres. Kelly's also in the Social Studies Department. Kelly has transformed the criminal justice curriculum to project-based, and has designed projects that get our students working with local and state law enforcement, collaborating with legal professionals, and she even brought national attention to Fenton when students went on a podcast with a motivational speaker about changes they want to see in our correction system. It's very important to me that we have a fair contract in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract top teachers and have a collaborative environment that can help us retain the best teachers during this time of teacher shortages. Thank you.
Mike Mitchell?
Good evening. My name is Mike Mitchell, and I've been a teacher here at Fenton High School for the last twenty, excuse me, twenty-three years. I'm a fellow, and a fellow FEA member that I'd like to give a shout out to is Ms. Jen Solucky from the Special Education Department. I've had the pleasure to co-teach with Ms. Solucky for the past four years. She is kind, patient, caring, hardworking, and she cares so deeply about her students, and she wants them all to be successful. Ms. Solucky has made me a better teacher, and it really has been a highlight of mine here at Fenton to work with her. Therefore, it's also important for me that a fair contract is in place before the start of the school year to continue to attract top teachers not unlike Ms. Solucky. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Larry Anzalone?
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Larry Anzalone. I'm head of grounds and an employee of Fenton for twenty years. I've also been a Bensonville resident and taxpayer for thirty-one years. I have two sons that graduated Fenton, both on the Athletic Wall of Hall of Fame. I chose to live in Bensonville because of Fenton High School. With that said, on Thursday, April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, at ten forty-five a.m., the athletic director, division leader of PE Health Driver Education at Fenton High School, sent an email offering kayaks and canoes to staff on a first-come basis. There were approximately fifteen kayaks and five canoes, one aluminum. To many Fenton employees, this was an inequitable and just short of a corrupt way to offer these items. A lottery system would have been more appropriate since many staff members, including custodians, groundsmen, teachers, are busy working and not checking emails on a regular basis. In addition, the assistant to the superintendent is believed to have first dibs and claimed four of these items. If these items were not considered to be of diminutive value, the A.D. and/or other administrator would be required to present the intent of distribution of these canoes and kayaks to the board before the A.D. sent an email to staff. Please refer to Section Four, Operational Services, Board Policy Four dash eighty, Accounting and Audits, Disposition of District Property. Thank you so much. I appreciate the board donating their time to Fenton High School. Thank you.
Kelly Mullins?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Mullins, and I've been a social studies teacher here at Fenton for sixteen years. A fellow FEA member who I'd like to tell you about is Rangjana Rajendran. She was just up here. Rangjana is a top-shelf professional. She attends classes, attends seminars, and conferences on her own time, and she regularly returns to Fenton and shares what she learns with other teachers. She is well-connected in the teacher community, and she, excuse me, she uses her connections to find resources to our questions as teachers and to students' questions. Many times over the years, Rangjana has coordinated with outside professionals to present to our students here at Fenton or via, in person or via Zoom. Specifically, her AP Psychology students have reaped the benefits of her dedication. These are professionals our students wouldn't otherwise have access to. She is a tremendously valuable asset to Fenton. Having a fair contract in place at the beginning of the year is important to me so that we can continue to attract top-tier professionals like Rangjana. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie Jackson?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Jackson, and I have been an English teacher at Fenton High School for seventeen years. A fellow FEA member who I would like to highlight is Chris Casterton. She's a special education teacher here. Nearly every morning, I see Chris in the cafeteria, working one-on-one with students, and she demonstrates limitless patience because she is dedicated to helping these students succeed with coursework that is often very difficult and very frustrating, and she believes that they are capable of high academic achievement. She's an invaluable member of our association, and her students are fortunate to be able to work with her because she advocates for them always. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract and retain top teachers like Chris during this time of teacher shortages.
Stephanie Downen?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Downen, and I have been a science teacher here at Fenton for eighteen years. I am very happy tonight to put a spotlight on fellow FEA member Sarah DeGracia in the Special Education Department. Sarah builds incredible relationships with students and is constantly buzzing around the classroom and building to help them. During her free periods, she's often found working in other people's classes, helping read tests or helping students complete lab work. You can find her in ISS, often helping students that aren't in our classes during the day. She's always using her free time to build connections, send emails, and help students make sure they are successful. I feel very fortunate to work with her as a teacher who is so dedicated to helping and prioritizing students. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the year to continue to promote a collaborative environment to help us grow and retain teachers like Sarah. Thank you.
Kelly Lamy?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Lamy. I've been a science teacher at Fenton for nine years, and a fellow FEA member I would like to tell you about tonight is applied tech teacher Lauren Lem. While I've taught five different courses in the last nine years, she has taught seventeen different courses, often with two separate curriculum running at the same time in a single room at once. That is what "at the same time" means. On average, she prepares three to four lessons each day. In her most challenging years, five or six. At Fenton, Lauren also prints brochures, passes, posters, t-shirts, notebooks, banners, and other marketing and communications materials for our students' projects, events, and productions. Many of these projects ask of her at the last minute, and she does bend over backwards to complete them. She works in her classroom over the summer to create the most engaging and up-to-date environment that she can. She just cares about everyone so much. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract and retain top teachers during this time of teacher shortage. Thank you.
Christine Casterton?
Hello. My name is Christine Casterton, and I have been a special education teacher for twenty-two years. A fellow member who I would like to tell you about is a world-language teacher and the ESL coordinator, Michelle Rodriguez. I've had the privilege to observe Michelle's interactions with EL students at different levels. I've seen her provide both emotional and academic support. She's always encouraged them to do her best. Michelle also works tirelessly to help our EL students prepare to pass the access test, as well placing our growing population of EL students with IEPs in the correct classes. She makes it a point to get to know these students. Michelle talks to them, she challenges them, and she provides them with the tools they need to be successful, and she does this always with a smile. The students don't just like her, but they respect and trust her. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract the teachers, and having a collaborative environment can help us keep and retain the best teachers like Michelle during this time of teacher shortages. Thank you.
Abra Millman?
Hi. My name is Abra Millman, and I've been a teacher at Fenton High School for seventeen years. A fellow FEA member who I'd like to spotlight is my fellow English teacher, Toni Oakson. Toni is retiring this year after thirty-three years. Thirty-three years. For thirty-three years, Toni has dedicated himself to the craft of teaching. I have spent the entirety of my career learning from him what it takes to be an educator. Toni's patience is not a quality, but rather a highly honed skill. Through our time assisting students in the Resource Center, I have witnessed his ability to find a student lost in an assignment and to expertly guide them through their confusion, never breaking pace or kindness. To dialogue and collaborate with Toni on a professional academic level is the equivalent of making the big leagues for an English teacher. Toni Oakson is the standard. His retirement is celebrated and grieved. It has been an honor to call him my colleague, and because of this, it is very important for me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract top teachers like Toni, and having a collaborative environment can keep us and retain the best teachers during this time of teacher shortages. Thank you.
Don Kane?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your selfless efforts in making Fenton the home of the Bison. My name is Don. I've been a teacher here at Fenton High School for ten years. A fellow FEA member who I'd like to tell you about is Scott Murphy. He works in the Special Education and Math Departments. What first struck me about Scott was his easygoing personality and his great sense of humor. As time went on, when I observed him teaching, I also noticed Scott's passion and dedication to his job. When the lesson started, he would put on what I like to call the Murphy Math Face, which meant he was ready to get down to serious math business with the kids. I noticed his students, too, followed suit, easygoing and smiling one moment, then seriously dedicated to the lesson the next. To close, about a week ago, I was speaking with a student during Bison time, and he made a simple yet profound statement about Scott. He said, "I like it when Mr. Murphy teaches me math." Praise like that from a student doesn't get much better. It is very important to me that a fair contract is in place at the beginning of the school year to continue to attract top teachers like Scott Murphy. Thank you.
John Aguilar?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is John Aguilar, and I teach world language. I've had the honor and privilege of serving the Fenton community for the past twenty-three years. I have lived in Wooddale for twenty-one years. My son Colin graduated last year and is a freshman at C O D., and my daughter Lita is a sophomore. She will be honored with our state contest drama champions tonight. I love Fenton High School and am very much invested in the Wooddale-Bensonville communities. I am here as a faculty member, resident, and parent. As such, I have a multifaceted view of many of the issues we are currently facing. Before me tonight, I see my colleagues, my neighbors, and the parents of my children's friends. You have heard teacher after teacher asking for a fair contract and why that should be important. While I will be retiring under the current contract, everyone needs to understand that this situation where staff members publicly address the Board of Education is not normal. During good-faith negotiations, the only public statement is when this elected body announces the final contract agreed upon by all parties at the end of negotiations. What you see tonight is evidence of a breakdown in communications and bad-faith negotiations. In the last forty years or so, having staff make regular public comments before the board has only happened three times: once in the late eighties, resulting in a complete work stoppage, and twice during this current administration. Many on this board and in this room witnessed the upheaval last time and know what I am talking about. I am asking this board to provide oversight and move forward in good faith before this discord negatively affects our staff, our students, and our community as a whole. The families in my community work hard, and we support our kids, and we trust that our elected officials ensure that our public institutions run smoothly. We should be here tonight to celebrate our students' successes instead of having to worry about how a potential labor dispute might affect our children's education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, FEA, and thank you, Ms. Rajendran. Next, we'll go to recognition.
Okay, we are here to celebrate both contest drama and group inter. If contest drama could make their way up this way. Okay, so we want to celebrate contest drama directed by Dr. Mike Mitchell and assisted by Amanda Baker and Jeremiah Barr. This year's show Sylvia was a state qualifier for their acting, but later, the whole crew won a state championship. That's right, a state championship for drama technical performance. Yeah, let's go. Just for a little clarification, drama, technical performance, a set design, set management, lights, and audio, and things related to that. So, great team effort by everyone here. This is also the fifth consecutive year at Fenton here that we've brought home a state championship in some... ...for this, this meeting. Anyway, I think I was saying, fifth consecutive state championship of some sort, so we're very proud of our Bison. Sylvia is a Broadway comedy about a man who adopts a dog during his midlife crisis and all the dog's antics that caused friction between him and his wife. And just to clarify, it's not about me. I picked, because I picked up five dogs in the last several years, but I wanted to make that distinction. But on the acting side, Delilah Johnson earned all-state cast honors for a second straight year. Delilah was Sylvia the dog, so Delilah. And Dr. Mitchell is going to take it from here.
And I will be really, really quick. I just, again, I just want to say it's really a pleasure to be here to celebrate and recognize our cast and crew. It really is a full team effort to get an award like this, and I do not want to forget to mention Jeremiah Barr and Amanda Baker, both of which cannot be here tonight at kind of last minute things, but they are, the three of us worked together with all of these kids, and it really is truly a team effort. I know I've already said that twice. I'd like to do a big shout-out to Ms. Bray. I know she's around here somewhere. There she is. For all, yeah, go by all means. For all of her support, I mean, she was, she was great this year in her new role and that kind of thing, so thank you so very much for everything that you do. As well as to John Aguilar, who was playing a parrot chaperone extraordinaire when we went down to state, so thank you very much, John, for doing that. We do have a couple of seniors from our tech crew that would like to just kind of say a few things, as well as introduce the cast and crew, so I'm going to give it over to Jessica and to Arianna.
I don't know if this is, okay, it doesn't work. My name is Jessica Van Loon. I am a senior. This is my first year in contest drama since I have planned to go into film and television in college. I'm going to say a little speech. I remember the first rehearsal I had joined in, which we got asked to make something we are excited about with Play-Doh. It's something like a team bonding skill we do. I specifically made, like, remember, like, specifically my Play-Doh, like, creation was lights, hearts, like a heart around people such as a team. While there was someone who also made dogs, stairs, and much more. And I remember us trying to find out, like, Dr. Mitchell's Play-Doh as well. That was a great bonding moment. As the year progressed, many of these things that we made started to come to life, and it's something that would be forever looked back on. The sound and music coming together, Delilah playing the role of a dog, and slaying it, such as Lex also being the husband, Lita being the, all the other roles, before I make it too long. This is one, it'd be my first year, it was one that I will definitely look back on because it was such a great honor to work with a cast like this and inspire me to keep going with what I want to do in my career, especially big things to our directors because without them, and their, like, hard work, time commitment, it'd be, they're the ones that make it work for us. So, thank you. And on to Arianna Hurtado.
Hi, I'm Arianna Hurtado. I did lights for contest drama. Contest drama is something I've been a part of for two years, and each year I've grown in different ways. I've had, I've been given the opportunity through contest drama to make new friends and memories that will last a lifetime. I've gotten to build a connection with so many different people and strengthen friendships with those I already knew. Performing at state was such an amazing privilege, but it was also a privilege to work with our directors, who've devoted so much time and effort to this club and its success. I will now announce the cast and crew of our contest drama, Sylvia. Lita Aguilar, Natalia Alvarado, Alex Cabeo, Delilah Johnson, Lex Mikulski, Nina Nair, Brandon Pauls, Nathaniel Rodriguez, Sarah Schaefer, Natalie Sisto, Kaliana Smith, Parot Thatch, and Jessica Van Loon. Thank you.
And now, if we could come forward to take a picture with the board. Okay, next up is group interpretation. Please come forward. Group Interp also performed extremely well at sectionals and advanced to the state finals. Nicole Hendricks and Melissa Feinberg directed a rendition of the popular book Memoirs of an Imaginary Friend. It's a story about an It's a story about an imaginary friend choosing to become real for a split second to save a boy that's been kidnapped. While at state, these individuals earned all-state cast honors. Tara Pabico, Jocelyn Wade, Sarah Guerrero, and Angel Santiago. And now Ms. Hendricks.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for taking your time tonight, um, to recognize our efforts towards, um, producing stories and doing it in a way that is creative and fully empowers our students to make choices, um, as we direct the show together, too. Um, I just want to give a moment of thanks to Melissa Feinberg, without whom none of this would be possible as well, and she is a great alumni of Fenton High School, too. And to Mrs. Wright and everybody in the arc who would allow us to practice over there in the theater space for about three weeks as we organize to put our show together, who follows, um, a young boy on the autistic spectrum disorder who, um, imagines an imaginary friend who has all of the qualities that he doesn't have in order to navigate this chaotic world that we live in, and that's, uh, Budo, and he comes into our existence for that reason. Um, so at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to two of our seniors who have been involved in Group Interp for, um, multiple years, one for four and one for three years, and let them, uh, share with you a few of their thoughts about the process and, um, their successes. Uh, we also hosted the Upstate Eight Conference for Group Interp as well, and that was a first for all of us, so that was incredible to see, um, these kids make connections with other casts and crews from other shows, too. Tara Pabico, come on up.
Hi, my name is Tara Pabico, I've been involved in Group Interp for three years, and I'm humbled to be up here speaking about Group Interp and my experience. I feel honored to have spent so much time working with our wonderful directors and learning so much from them. They pushed us and believed in us, and I can't thank them enough for growing, helping us grow as individuals and as a group. I'm also thankful for this very hardworking group of individuals, even after spending hours together for weeks, we didn't let that pressure cave in on us. We continued to push and create a beautiful show where each performance was always stronger than the last. I'm really honored to be part of this group and to have this experience that I'll cherish for the rest of my life.
Uh, hello, I am Angel Santiago, I am a four-year member of Group Interp. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the amazing coaches we have. Getting to the state level consecutively is not easy at all, and, um, when our coaches saw at the beginning of the year that we would have three, about three days where every single cast member was able to be there for at least more than two hours of practice because of other extracurriculars that they'd take apart of, um, well, a lot of directors would have given up on that, but our coaches did not, and found a way to lose our lead for an hour, or lose certain people of the show for another hour because they don't give up and they always face everyone else, no matter what. And I'd like to say a thank you to all of our cast members. I know some people had to give up certain extra, extracurriculars because they weren't allowed to participate, or weren't able to balance everything together, which gladly they, they made the sacrifice and they were a true team player, and the cast felt truly like a family. And I was asked to read everyone's name on the list, so, a thank you to Ariana Acosta, Aldo Benitez, Alexa Calderon, Hamza Chohan, Sara Guerrero Gorostietta, Rosa Guzman Santos, Arturo Hurtado Jr., Zuhedi Mendoza Garcia, Tara Pabico, Elijah Rivera, myself, Zoya Sidiki, Mia Silva, Jocelyn Wade, and especially Nathaniel Rodriguez, who, the day of our Fenton showcase, was able to step in, sacrificed a lot that day, and went through a whole emotional rollercoaster to stop in and be helpful to his other family. So, thank you, and thank you for these amazing four years.
Okay, the board could come forward again for another photo.
Next, I'll go to our injured.
It's a special moment, I think, for all of us, also sadness. Just wanted to recognize our president, who's been on the last four years of service, from the heart here. Um, I want to put some things before we go, maybe the district, people be proud of us, thank you for fresh evidence and innovation, thank you for making me aware of sustainability and community, um, and thank you for jelling all of us, uh, these last four years as president. In token of the board and administrative committee.
I want to say a couple of things. I have to say that I really enjoy my time working alongside you as a board member and a vice president. I respect how open you are to opposing views and then considering them. With that in mind, as president, it has made the board more transparent by making us feel welcome to voice our own opinions. I also want to thank you for your hard work towards the referendum and your countless hours spent with the community to help move on them. Your work and ideas for the Fenton Foundation will make a difference for our students for years to come, and I'm so happy that you're going to continue on as the board president so that we're not gonna lose you as part of our Fenton community. And then, on a personal note, um, one of the benefits of volunteering is that you get to meet people that are really cool and interesting, that you might not have met otherwise, and I guess you're one of those people to me, so you'll be missed.
Thank you.
I believe you get to wait up to the end.
Oh, sure.
There is more people waiting online. I'm just gonna say two words. Great job, great opportunities, and, uh, good leadership, and I really appreciate what you have done because, uh, it opened up a new, a new point of view because Fenton, it was totally different. And, uh, since we are coming together as a board, believe me, we were strong. And I'm not gonna say that I'm feeling that we are losing you because you are part of the community, and part of the community, I believe, you can share your responsibilities with your neighbors, students, coworkers, because it's a big challenge to be here, sit in front of everybody, and say yes or not, because we are part of the community. Thank you very much, Kit.
Kit, I don't know if to thank you or begrudge you, because you encouraged me to speak up during strategic planning when I was merely a parent filling in for my wife. I never knew that was gonna shine a spotlight on me, and here I am today, sitting on the board, and, uh, I definitely appreciate that environment of, of being able to speak up regardless of the difference of opinion, and, and at the end, we still be good. You did a great job in fostering that environment.
Thank you.
Kit, thank you for being the first person to contact me when I was elected on the board, and, uh, I had no clue what I was in for, but you kind of softened the blow, and I appreciate you, and you, you've done an amazing job as board president and, um, bringing us together as a, as a team and a board, and I'll miss you, but not really, because like Juliette said, you're still a part of the community, and also, um, having, um, you show me what it means about DEI. I had no, really no clue, I mean, and, and that's the truth, so I appreciate, uh, what you've, uh, done, and keep your phone on because I'll be calling. But thank you so much, and, uh, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Going at the very end after all of these wonderful words is hard. I, I have known you not as long as the rest of these folks here, but, um, through their inspiring words, I can see the kind of leader that you are. You're the leader that we needed here. I'm sad to see you go, but I'm looking forward to seeing you lead the, uh, your next, sorry, the, uh, Fenton Foundation, there we go, that's the word I'm looking for, um, and continuing to be a servant leader in the community. So, you will be missed, but thankfully you won't be far. Thank you for everything, sir.
Okay, uh, I guess the, the first thing that comes to mind is gratitude and optimism. Um, you know, leading is never a burden, it's a privilege, uh, so, so please take that as a privilege that you're here, um, and take your power lightly. Uh, what I mean by that is, um, when you assume power, you empower others' people, and you bring voice to people that, uh, normally won't have a voice. Um, and I would say that, uh, in, in the principles I, I try to follow is the sustainability, you know, it's not just about climate change, it's about relationships. You know, how, how do we sustain healthy, productive relationships? Sustainability is more than just the climate. Um, and then diversity, equity, and inclusion is part of that. The only way you can have change through that is if you live it, and what that means is, um, in my mind, is if you, um, if you see differences, they're not the enemy, it, it's an opportunity. You know, when, because you look at blind spots, and, you know, you might have blind spots you don't know, the other person has those differences, might have that answer for you. So, just keep that in mind. Inclusion is just making sure people feel like they belong. All that's just lived through us right now, so, thank you so much, everybody. Um, I value the FPA, I value all the stakeholders, the community members, uh, thank you so much for this privilege, I will not be far, and, uh, the work will go on. So, let's get to more board business.
Yes, sir. Yep, let, let's go ahead and tend to board business and exchange of power, so, let's go with James.
Thank you, Kit. Uh, next up is naming of President Pro Tem. Uh, board members, is there any one of you that would like to sit in as President Pro Tem?
I nominate Juliette.
I accept.
Okay, so it's Juliette Ragel, acting as Pro Tem. Go ahead, Ms. Ragel.
Uh, we will now adjourn, uh, scene, scene die. In other words, we are closing this part of the meeting. Call to order. I would like to call the April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting of the Fenton Community High School District One Hundred Board to order. May I have a roll call? Ragel? Hayde?
Here.
Kovak?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
Tink, and, and, no, we don't have to, okay. We have a quorum. Acknowledged receipt of certified election results. The official campus and abstract of votes cast at the twenty-twenty-three consolidated school board election held April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and certified by Dubage County Clerk Gene Kazmerek, has been received and accepted by Fenton Community High School One Hundred. The final winning results listed in order of highest to lowest votes received to fill our four board positions are Juliette Ragel, reelected to a two-year term ending in twenty-twenty-five, one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight votes received. Carrie Lewis, reelected to a four-year term ending in twenty-twenty-seven, one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven votes received. Reed Goodrich, elected to a four-year term ending in twenty-twenty-seven, one thousand three hundred and forty-six votes received. Leo Figaroa, reelected to a four-year term ending in twenty-twenty-seven, one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine votes received. Next item, oath of office. All newly elected board members, please stand up. Let's all read the oath of office together. A copy has been provided on your desk. We'll do it all together. So, where it says name, of course, you're gonna insert your name. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and do it all together. I, Juliette Ragel, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Fenton Community High School District One Hundred in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall... I shall accept the responsibilities for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community in the goals, the defined outcomes, and set the course for Fenton Community High School District 100. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's advocate for behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Fenton Community High School District 100. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. The next item is board officer nomination. Election of President. Would anyone like to nominate a president for the board?
I would like to.
Go ahead.
No. I'll be Leo.
After me? Okay, I would like to nominate Carrie.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Would anyone like, all in favor of Carrie for the office of president, raise their hands. It is unanimous vote. Carrie is now president.
Yes, we're just gonna cheer her. Thank you.
Before proceeding on, I'd just like to say that I'm grateful to be elected, and honored to serve alongside of you as educators, and that I truly value and hold in great regard the work you do for this community, and just as a profession as a whole. And I hope going forward to do nothing but progress that in all of the endeavors we have here going on. So thank you. Next item, election of Vice President. Would anyone like to nominate a Vice President for the board?
I'd like.
Ladies first.
I'd like to nominate Juliette Ragel for our Vice President of the Board.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Candidate receiving, all in favor of Juliette for the office of President, of Vice President, raise your hands. It's unanimous. Juliette is Vice President of the Board.
I'm very excited to continue on as Vice President. And I really enjoy this position, and I'm really grateful to be able to continue on in this way. I think it will be, it'll be good.
Our next item, election of Secretary. Would anyone like to nominate a Secretary for the board?
All right. For Secretary?
I'll second.
All in favor of Leo as Secretary for the Office, for the Office of Secretary, raise your hand.
Can I vote?
It is unanimous. Leo, congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Because it's, it could be a minor responsibility, but in the meantime, we got to get together as board, and I really appreciate your vote. And I believe, and I truly believe that we can work together to solve any decision, any problem, because we are seven. We are not one. Plus, our community, I believe, they're not gonna leave us alone. Thank you.
Our next item, Board Committee Appointments. First Board, First Committee, Bensonville Community Foundation. Does that understand Kent and Juliette?
No, it's Janet.
Ken and John.
Janet.
Ken and John, I'm sorry.
Myself and John.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Board Finance Facilities Committee. I would like to stay on with that, as well as John. Board Policy Committee.
I would like to be on that.
That's what I.
So it's Juliette and Kent.
Kent, yeah.
Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate. That would be.
That is you. That's you.
Myself. North DuPage Special Education Cooperative. One position and one alternate. Leo?
I'm gonna accept that, but I'm gonna need someone who can alternate with me, because I'm not always be able to make it.
Reed, would you be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Leo and Reed, thank you. Legislative Education Network of DuPage County, Lind. One position, typically that's.
That's typically, that's typically me, but we should assign a board member as well, as a representative. Would anyone like to volunteer that position? I think that was you in the past.
Yeah.
Leo?
It was me.
Would you like to continue to be in that spot, sir?
It's on Fridays, usually in the morning. And sometimes I'm not able to make it. Fridays is a busy day at work.
I usually attend, and what I do is usually update Leo for that position, for the information that's given.
I can continue, but it's gonna be many days that.
I do not mind, I'm usually there.
Okay.
I'll keep you and the board posted.
Last Committee, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI. Two co-chairs.
I'd like to remain.
It was Kit, so that position is open.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
I'd like for Leo, if he would consider it. I don't know how many.
I'll go for it. You can count on me.
Okay.
So that's Sylvia and Leo. Thank you. Discussion action items. Gilbain Contract. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the construction management contract with Gilbain Building Company as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Sure. Earlier this evening, we reviewed the construction management agreement contract at the Finance Facility Meeting. We went through the process of the, how we went about choosing and selecting a company to represent us. We narrowed it down to four companies. We are recommending Gilbain Contract, Gilbain Building Company, for the agreement, the contract to honor that. The, and they would oversee, obviously, the water mitigation work and any other future projects that may be happening as well. Their fees are listed in there, as well as their contract. And it is underway now. There is a proposal also, or a fee, for the pre-construction services that they've been working with us for over the past year. And that's listed as well, at a $20,000 cost. And I do want to say, when the Board gave Mr. Entango authority to enter into a contract, we're asking for basically ratification tonight, pending attorney and insurance review by our insurance consultant. That has been completed. We've met with them, myself, our attorney, our insurance consultant, along with their representatives. So we, the contract tonight has been vetted by all those parties. We're in agreement with it, and we're recommending that the Board ratify this contract as presented.
Any questions?
Roll call.
Ragel?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstained.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Next item, Stormwater Detention System Bid. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the bid from Storm Trap LLC in the amount of $619,643 for stormwater detention system work?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, Storm Trap submitted the lowest responsible bid.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just briefly, we again reviewed this earlier this evening as well. This is for the structure that will be, contain the water for the water mitigation project that will be basically buried underground adjacent to the football field. And this is kind of the first leg of the stormwater mitigation work that'll be completed. But we wanted to order this early to get it in. So one firm that basically produces these products did bid on it, they were the lowest bidder, and we're recommending to approve this. It is less than the estimate, at $619,643. And Gilbain has vetted this contractor, they've worked with them in the past, and they are recommending to accept this bid as well.
I'd just like to note that this stormwater project is doing a lot in protecting our current building, especially with the water, things are coming in, you know. With a structure of water, it can be very damaging. We plan on doing a lot here, and this is a huge part in making sure that this is still a viable building. Roll call.
Ragel?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstained.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Our next item, Field Turf Proposal. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal from Field Turf USA Incorporated for the installation of track surfacing and synthetic turf in the stadium field in the amount of $1,131,232.21.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening. Just to recap from several of the conversations we've had, this is the track surface and the field, the stadium field surface materials, like the previous bid. This is sort of in our best interest to order this now for lead time purposes, so that we have this material in when we need it during the water mitigation project. These surfaces are being replaced primarily because they're being dug up as part of the water mitigation project. And so we therefore need to replace these surfaces as part of the project. So this is, this was through Sourcewell Consortium, so they had already pre-bid this material. So therefore, your review.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions? Can we get a roll call?
Ragel?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstained.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Academic Life Skills Program Classroom Modifications. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal from Larson Contract Incorporated for classroom modifications in the amount of $38,210.
I'll take this one. Just real quickly, these are two rooms rented by NetSec, North DuPage Special Ed Cooperative. The reason why we're modifying these two rooms is because of student population growth and student population needs. As you all know, NetSec rents our room every year $15,000 per room, so a total of $30,000 moving forward, which will help pay for these modifications.
And can you just tell us how much they rent the room, how much they pay for those rooms yearly?
It's yearly, for, moving forward, is $30,000 per year.
Okay.
So the total cost is, what, just short of $39,000?
Yes.
But you're gonna get $30,000 a year for it?
Correct.
Stumbu? Second.
Roll call.
Ragel?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Resolution of Appointment to DAOES Board of Directors. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution to appoint Michelle Papenicholo the Director of Post-Secondary Pathways and Career Tech Education as Fenton's representative for the DuPage Area Occupational Education System as presented?
So moved.
Second.
This one is, as you guys know, DAOS really is TCD. Okay, that's where we send our students for automotive, fire, cosmetology, basically your CTE classes, vocational classes. Why Michelle Papenicholo? Because that's in her job description, and we would like to recommend that she continue filling in. filling in as a Board Representative for Fenton High School.
Item F, Resolution.
We have to do a roll call?
Roll call. Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstained.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. F, Resolution Appointing School Treasurer. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution appointing school treasurer as presented? And that, I think that'd be you, right?
Yeah, that is. That's the recommendation. So per Board Policy 2:110 states that the treasurer of the Board shall be either a member of the Board who serves a one-year term, or a non-member who serves at the Board's pleasure. It has been the practice of the, of the school district to appoint the Chief School Business Officer as the school treasurer. Should the Board appoint the school, the Chief School Business Officer as treasurer, the attached resolution will need to be acted on. And that resolution is the appointing of the school treasurer. And this would be for the 23, 24 school year, starting July 1st, 2023.
Motion? So moved.
Second.
It was Juliette.
Juliette, Juliette.
And Juliette. Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Item G, next item is discussion only. The topic is health insurance renewal for fiscal year 2024. Bruce?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Lewis pointed out, this is just a discussion, so no action necessary. But I just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of our health insurance renewal for 23, 24 school year. And that coincides with our fiscal year, so this plan year would start July 1st, as our fiscal year does as well. We're a member of the Educational Benefit Cooperative. And the intent is to join, you know, school districts together to increase their purchasing power for the advantage of getting more competitive pricing. The EBC, as it's referred to, is established in 1984, began with eight school districts, and has grown to 122 school districts today. And we've been a member since 2009. Each member, the one, I think this is a key piece and why it's been popular with school districts who belong to it. Each member retains the ability to create and change their plans, the HMO, PMP, PPO, or dental plan, a life plan, as they so choose, which is often required by the nature of collective bargaining agreements. So we have that ability and we do make that design as necessary within our constraints. We do offer three plans, three medical plans. We have one PPO plan and two HMO plans. We also have a dental plan through them as well. The dental plan and PPO are self-funded. The HMO is funded on a cost-plus basis, and life insurance is fully insured. There's a banding formula that was created to make it an equitable means based on your experience and what your rates would be. So there's two components that go into that. I won't get into great detail with that, but there's the paid client claim loss ratio and the pool average rate increase. In short, the PPO medical claim loss ratio, we are above the average, so we're at 118% our loss ratio compared to the pool average of 108.2%. So what that means is the band, the middle of the banding formula is 10.4%, and that's based on, you know, that 108.2%. We're just a percentage above that. Our, our average has been, as I said, tracking about 10 points higher than the average. And the pool average was 10.4, and our PPO rate would be 11.4%. The HMO plans were again trending by 102, or 110%, rather. The pool average is 102.3%. That brings us to an eight and a half percent increase compared to the pool average of seven and a half. And then the dental were right in the middle of where the pool fell. The pool average was 95%. We're at 102, so a 2.6% increase for dental plans. And then the life insurance is guaranteed and will remain unchanged through 2026. Every year then during this time, we communicate this information, the rates, to our staff. Of course, we do offer and have an open enrollment every May, so that'll begin on Monday. And it'll run through May 19th, so staff have the opportunity to change plans, add plans, you know, move from one to another, what, what have you during this open enrollment time. So there's no, you know, trigger that, you know, life event that would have to happen in order to make a change. This is the one yearly opportunity they have to make that change. And just some numbers to share with you, current insurance participation. In the PPO plan, we have 90 members. HMO plans are 71. And then dental plans, we have 170 participants. And then if we compare this year to last year, again, the PPO is increasing 11.4%, the HMO 8.5, and the dental at 2.6%. Last year, it was a little bit less with the PPO at 6.5. The HMO was slightly more at 9.7, and the dental was 3.7. So the two, HMO plan and dental plans are down compared to last year, and the PPO plan is up. So that is the overall view of the planned happenings for our insurance program for beginning July 1st. So any questions on that?
Just to reiterate, Bruce, PPO is up in percentage. However, HMO, two HMO, and dental are down compared from last year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Bruce, what is our forecasted total cost increase that we're gonna be paying out? Assuming folks, you know, your, your small amount that'll be changing between HMO and PPO, what's our forecast?
Yeah, you know, I had that answer. Can I give it to you next time? It, it, I had it, and I don't know why it's not on my sheet here. But it's, it's a, I'll have it for you at the next meeting. Sorry about that, but.
No, it's, it's fine.
But, great question, but I'll, I'll, or Mr. Untangle will email it to everybody, but, yeah, so there'll be a slight increase.
How's that? I like giving Bruce homework. How's that?
Yeah.
Is this, is this a yearly increase thing? It's just a matter of how much?
Typically, what, since I've been here, we did have one decrease, actually. During COVID, they were very modest increases because a lot of people were deferring procedures, electric procedures in particular. So the last two years, it's ramped up a little bit more because people are actually going to the doctor now, having procedures. So that, that's kind of what, where the trend is happening right now. But, but there have, not necessarily, but more increases than decreases, I would say, for sure.
Do any of these programs have any sort of, I know them as B well, but do they have any? Do we have that as a part of our offerings?
We do, and Mr. Harbilly, do you want to expound on that a little bit? He's having a good time running that program.
Yeah, so we resurrected the Wellness Committee this year coming off of COVID, so we are trying to do various activities. Like, for example, we did biometric screening this year that has not been done for, for a while because of COVID. We're doing various activities. So we do have a committee. We meet monthly. We're actually doing like a Happy Teacher Week the last week. So just any, anything we can do to boost morale, boost health, health awareness. We're doing Steppers Challenge every, every month. So various activities. We're gonna continue to try to grow that going into next school year.
Awesome. Glad that we're getting back on to those sorts of things. So, thank you for, for doing that.
And we do have an insurance committee, which Jose and I, I guess we kind of co-chair that, but there's representatives from each work group that are on that committee as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
We move on. No further questions. Consent Agenda? Do we have any questions and or comments regarding the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstained.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. District 100 informational items.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. First up, as you can see in our agenda, is one of my favorite part of the Board, which is highlights students and learning. As you could see, next slide, please. We have made a conscious effort, folks, to highlight students and their learning here at Fenton, as well as their other supports. Let's go back from the bottom. We'll work our bottom up here. In August, teaching and learning was the, was the focus for the school year. In September, we presented to you the graduate class of 2022. Where were they going? Did they go to four-year, two-year college, trades, military, and so forth? In October, we presented the State Report Card. November, Fenton Courses, what we are offering here at Fenton. December, MTSS, which is multi, the multi-tier support system, which is basically intervention folks who are not being as successful as we want, whether social, emotional, or academic. In January, we provided information about our incoming ninth graders from Woodridge as well as Bensonville. In February, we highlighted College and Career Pathway with Michelle Papa Nicola, our dual credit, our TCD program and Career Pathways. In March, we highlighted Student Activities and Special Education. And tonight, we're gonna talk about School Counseling Services and our ELL students. First up is Dr. Karanda to talk about School Counseling Services.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk with you about who we are and what we do. Photograph here is our school counseling team. We have eight counselors. There are six generalists. We have a college and career as well as an SEL counselor. And I'm glad we get the opportunity to talk about this tonight because it gives me a chance to very publicly thank and highlight our administrative professional staff. Today is National Administrative Professionals Day, and so it's nice to be able to, be able to thank the people in our office who work directly with us. Kimberly Lund, our administrative professional in our office. Beth Damascus, our registrar. Pat Scott also works with a lot of the DLs and helps us out in our office. And then Chris Bone assists us with our community service. So our thanks on behalf of my team for all the work that they and all of the administrative professionals in our district do. It's a great day to celebrate them for that, and I'm glad we have that opportunity here tonight. So talking a little bit about what we do as a school counseling department. Our mission and vision are clear, that successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. And we're guided by ethical practices and the vision that Fenton students will be resilient and engaged self-advocates who contribute to diverse global community. The work we do is research-based and data-driven, and we are associated with multiple professional organizations, including the American and Illinois School Counselor Associations and the Illinois Association for College Admission Counseling. And for that one, the IACAC, Paul Welsh, one of our team members, is in Springfield now for their conference. He's the president-elect going forward to that statewide agency, or that statewide association. So we're very proud of that as well, and the work that Paul does with them as well. For our service delivery, as a counseling department, as Aska described, we have some unique things that we do within our, our school. We have individual student meetings. Those can include meeting directly with counselors about courses, information, their, their high school experience, four-year plans, and so on. We also have, we do some larger-scale group, grade-level meetings. I put four examples up there, one for each grade level of what we do. We'll go into bice in time. We'll meet with our student groups. And we go through various things. So for example, staff introduction to the ninth graders, career interest explorations with 10th graders, and so on. And then building-wide, we work through course selection with all the students, and we build a master schedule around that for the next school year so that all students have schedules coming in. One new thing we have this year within our department is our College and Career Software Program called School Links. That's a new program we're using. It will be, we have two grade-level class groups with it now. By next fall, all students will be on School Links. In fact, yesterday, we were in, with our counseling team in the biology classes with our freshmen, getting all the freshmen rolled onto School Links, getting them to start using it, and so on. And it's a great platform for a variety of things that, that freshmen can do with their four-year planning, college, career interest exploration. And then when into, you know, junior, senior year, talking through financial aid and being able to get on that platform, looking at schools and colleges and so on. It's really a very broad program that, you know, brings a lot of features to us, that we've kind of had piecemeal, that we're kind of pulling together now. So we've been working on that, and we'll continue with that into, into the fall. Also, we do a, just to highlight a couple of other things, we do a senior survey at the end of the year and an end-of-year report. And one of the things we do with that, we gather a lot of data from the seniors before they leave. And then, again, we, we're very data-based in, in what we do. So we create an end-of-year report. And so we're meeting with those students next week in their bice in times to get that started. Last year is the class of 22, so just some data points that, these are samples only. There's, there's a lot more to it. But for example, in the class of 22, 82% of students indicated they will continue their education after graduation. 67% of them reported that they were first-generation college students. And the class of 2022 was awarded approximately $1.3 million in scholarships. So we, we pull a lot of data into that report, and we break it down by even Wooddale, Blackhawk students, so that we can kind of even see and communicate with our, our sender schools some of the things that we do. So, you know, we do, we do a lot of that for database things as we move forward and go throughout the school year. Some of our other departmental functions, we have, we do grades and records, school registration, advanced placement testing. Again, we're in professional associations and activities. And also, you know, we work with our students who are registering, families coming in through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act. Students who are, you know, for example, they may be doubled up on their own, might be migratory and so on. So we work through the act and all of the parameters that we have with that to make sure that their primary goals are education. We get them in so that we can make sure that we're providing that with them. So, again, our office, we have a very broad range of, of things that we do, and our counselors are involved with students in, in all of those items. One of the largest pieces we do in trauma and crisis prevention and response, this is also one of the most unknown things because so much of what we do is confidential, that a lot of it is not necessarily brought about and discussed. We talk about it in the team, but if it's confidential, we don't even talk between team members because we have laws that guide that, as well as the ethics and so on. So we protect student confidentiality in all the work we do. But a lot of it, as listed here, are some examples of some of the things we work on. So we're part of a student services overall group. I work a lot with Rich Watts, our Director of Special Education. He and I work together, and then we are a large student services group with social workers, counselors, the dean's office, the health office, school psychology, and so on. So we do form a very large student services group. And then, safety is our primary responsibility and our primary goal with our students. We've got a lot of training on safety. We've had a lot of that over the last 12 years here as well. And safety is, you know, it's facility safety, physical safety, but also that has broadened a lot over the last few years into, you know, online, digital, things like that, where it has really changed the context of a lot of the work we do. So we, we, we work through a lot of that. And then also, mental health safety is a large part of that as well. And so we want to make sure that the students know what their resources are, that there are trusted adults in the building, where they can come if they need help, how to reach out to us if they, if they do need that. And that's a 24/7 thing as well. So our team does work. Anytime we get something, we're immediately on it. We're calling each other. We're intervening and we're stepping in. So we do a lot of that kind of work as well. It's, it's a huge part of what we do, and we collaborate a lot. We run student groups with, based on student needs. James, Mr. Earl mentioned earlier about a multi-tiered system of supports. We have tiered systems of interventions and supports we do within our groups. And we work a lot with, again, the social work, special ed department, and so on, to make sure we're supporting our students. So there's a lot of work that our counselors are doing and our team is doing, that we do that. One thing I'd like to highlight, one of them up there, the signs of suicide. We do that. We coordinate with Kate Ward and the Social Studies Department. Our student services team will coordinate and go in through what's called the Signs of Suicide or the SOS programming. We go into Intro to Social classes with our freshmen. We communicate, we, we work together as a group on that. This is usually in August, September, beginning of the school year. beginning of the school year. We communicate directly with parents, letters, resources, explaining exactly what we're doing with their students in those freshman classes. We go in and we make sure that everyone knows, and the freshmen see who are the resources for their needs, if they need anything. And we like to connect with them directly, face-to-face, in smaller groups of about 26 students. So it gives us an opportunity with our counselors, social workers, to go in directly and do that. There's an opt-out for that. If parents want to opt out of that programming, they can certainly. We communicate that all well ahead of time, and we do a lot of follow-up. And then we follow up with students as needed, sometimes immediately, depending on what the, you know, the needs are, or what is expressed. So our team goes in and does a lot of that work, and we want to make sure that we do that, especially with the freshmen really early on in the year, as part of our, you know, kind of interaction with them and introduction to them, so that they know, you know, what it is they can do and need, that we're there to support them if needed. We also have a lot of outreach, engagement, and partnerships. The picture you see here, this is from our day of service a couple Saturdays ago, that says at Fisher Farm. We had a lot of students come in and go to various locations. They went to Redmond Park and did some things as well. Community service is a big part of the school's culture, I would say, as well, and we work with our students on that. I ran a report today, just to see what the current update was. I calculated it twice to make sure I was reading it right. Our current cohort of all four years of students, about 1,430 of them, I calculated the total number of hours currently in the database for community service for all four of those classes, and it's roughly about 22,700 hours that that four years of students has done in community service. So it's really quite remarkable and astonishing number, and a credit to the kids for getting out there and doing all of that. It is a graduation requirement, but we find a lot of students go beyond what they're required to do. So it really is profound, and it helps out a lot of, you know, local organizations that, you know, really need the help and do come to us and ask us, and a lot of students go and seek that out as well. So we're very proud of that, and that, you know, that they do those things, especially with that astounding number. We also, through our outreach, engagement, and partnerships, we do a lot of evening events. Many of you have been to them. Incoming ninth-grade parent night, we do a lot of work with our sender schools, with their eighth graders. We were there for course selection, we met with their students, so that their students can see our team, we presented, and then we met in and meet with them on their course selections. Parents can, you know, come in and meet with us as well on Saturdays and in the evenings to do those course selections. We also do FAFSA nights, financial aid nights, and workshops. We do college and career visits, we do college and career fairs, explorations, parent nights, and then presentations to parent groups, Padres Unidos Polish Outreach, and then with our sender schools. The picture you see there is something new this year. One of our counselors, Maris Elia Vila, talked with our team about a resource she had called Hope Paws that she brought in. So right before final exams, you see our two therapy dogs there in our office with Ms. London and a couple of our students. We brought that in for final exams, and met with classes. We went into certain classrooms, we were in the hallways, we were in here in the ark, students were coming up petting the dogs, and it really changes the dynamic of everything around you when that happens. It was very, very well received. We heard a lot from a lot of people, why weren't you in my room, that kind of thing. So it was nice to have that. And then they were back today, this morning. We've had early morning AP study groups, because AP testing is starting next week. So we came in, they came in at, the organization was kind enough, they came in at seven this morning, and we met with the students, we came into the rooms that they were studying in, and then we were also able to get into our zero-hour health class. We were able to meet, you know, student council was having me pass by that room and kind of got to interact with them. So it's a really fun way to do something like that, and it really does, you know, is part of what we do in our mission in the office of making sure we take the edge off of things and help students through whatever it is that they need, including pressure points like exams, AP tests, and so on. It's really one of the, one of the things that we're, you know, we're very proud of, and that we, you know, we started doing that this year. It really is a quite remarkable thing to see, and it's been a pleasure to work with them so far, and I look forward to continuing that with them. So again, we do a lot more, I think, than what's explained, but we wanted to give you kind of an overview tonight of some of the things that we do. Again, a lot of it is unknown and confidential, a lot of it is right out there in public, and we're very proud of the work that we do. I've known the counseling group for 12 years in my various roles here. This is the first year directly with them, and I've worked with them on teams for those 12 years and so on. It really is a privilege to do that. A lot of the work that our counselors do is very thorough and very delicate, and most people don't know about it. I get to see it every day, and I do see the impact it has immediately on students, and it really is a very humbling thing to see. I'm proud to be a part of that team, and I'm very grateful to the professionals on it that do this work. Thanks for the chance to talk with you about it tonight. Sure.
Do you have any ACT application users available?
We do, yeah. We have, there, we have a digital program that we can use for ACT and SAT. We have a couple students in it now for the SAT part, right? I'm sorry, looking over at Ms. Bray, because we were coordinating that for testing. So our ingenuity program that we use for our credit recovery and some outplacements, we do have, that program offers SAT and ACT prep and is available to all students. I don't know that we've directly offered ACT, we've done a lot of SAT, because that's the one we do, but it is something that's within the program. And I don't know, we've been asked a lot about that, but we can, we certainly have that available to students.
Yeah, we also had SAT study groups free of charge for kids with very sessions this past year.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Thank you all.
Board, that's important work, as you know, behind the scenes. Folks, our students come, are very unique, with unique challenges. I was just cranking out, just real quick, here's my math skills. He said 22,000 service hours. That came out to 916 days of community service. That's 2.5 years. That's humongous. Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Lorenzo Rubio to talk about ELs, English Language Learners and our bilingual learners.
Hi, good evening. Everyone can hear me? Thanks for having me. I've been looking forward to sharing some highlights from our multilingual division with you guys tonight. It's EL and World Language, it used to be, right? We've decided to frame it as multilingual division here at Fenton. So we can go to our slide here with our first photo?
You have it.
Oh, I have it, I'm sorry. Right. So there's our reframing, multilingual division. Fenton, I think, our new vision here in the multilingual division is that multilingual education is essential in building an equitable and accessible school experience for all of our students, right? Every school district is going to say that they're for educational equity, but you really have to look at how they service and educate their language learners to see if that's the case. So we'll start with saying that the vision moving forward is that Fenton, Bensonville, and Wood Dale, we're a multilingual, multicultural community, and so Fenton should be a leader in educating its multilingual population. So we feel like we've been doing that. Padres Unidos and Polish, our Polish parent group, will highlight at the end. We've got our last meeting coming up this week as well, but that's further evidence of that, too. Not every district has such well-attended parent groups, right? Oftentimes, it's the case that school districts are looking to involve their multilingual parents, and we don't have that issue here in our community. And so we're gonna, we are, and we're going to continue to be a regional and state leader in educating our multilingual students. So how are we doing that this year? We started something new. We held our first-ever multilingual student summit. It wasn't just us, we did this in collaboration with two districts, three schools that are nearby, that share a lot of our population, York Community High School in Elmhurst, Addison Trail, and Willowbrook. But I want to highlight that Fenton was the leader in this event, right? It was our teachers, Mr. Herrera and Mr. Vargas, that were leading all the students there in icebreaker activities. It was our counselors, Mr. Kano and Mr. Welsh, that were giving sessions on financial aid. It was our aides that were helping organize it. It was our amazing bilingual coordinator, Ms. Michelle Rodriguez, that was organizing the whole thing, pretty much. And our MTSS coordinator and a social worker, Maya Wayland and Edith Reinaga, that gave presentations on relationships, trauma, and even a special session for our Ukrainian students, which we've seen an uptick in this year. So there were, in total, four schools, 120-plus students, 12 different languages represented. Why did we do this? It's often the case that there's other conferences like this for students, but very often, it's the case that our language learners get excluded from them, right? And it's usually because of a logistical thing, you know? It's just really hard to present something like this and have it be accessible for students that may not be solid in the English language. So our vision here was to create something like this that would be accessible to our students regardless of their language level, and it was a big success. We had sessions, like I said, in Spanish mostly, but 12 other, 11 other languages. It was the first time we did it, we hope to continue to grow it. Bensonville Park District lent us a space and was a great collaborator as well. So we hope to grow this. But this is just one example of how Fenton is getting out there and being a leader when it comes to educating our multilingual students. And the other schools that were there, they took note of that, right? They saw that we took the lead in that. Here's some more pictures from it. The kids got to get together, there was a Guatemalan traditional dance that was, that some of the kids performed. It was really cool to see, for example, some of the, our Ukrainians. We have a population of about 10 Ukrainian students that we've gotten this year. There was one from another school, right, who was in awe that we had nine or 10, right? And they've already connected, and they've exchanged phone numbers, so that's really cool to see. How else are we doing it? Something that was in place long before, you know, I started here, the SEAL of Biliteracy. This year, we just wrapped up testing. We had approximately 50 Fenton seniors give up some of their time on testing day, a day where they were not required to be here, and take this test to see if they qualified for the SEAL of Biliteracy. We had Spanish, we had a number of Polish students, or students taking in Polish, French, German, Ukrainian, Russian, and even Czech. Our results are coming in, but we've got about, I know at least 40 students that have earned either the SEAL of Biliteracy or the combination towards the SEAL of Biliteracy. That's important, because increasingly, colleges and universities give course credit for the SEAL of Biliteracy. It gets printed on their transcript and their diploma, and they get to wear a medal at graduation. Once again, highlighting that we're about, like, we value your multilingualism. It isn't just something that you come with, and, but it's really about learning English here. No, here, it's valuable. How else are we doing it? This year, we, this is another thing that we're launching. We've actually got one of our students going on the trip with us. Dominika's over there. She stayed for the whole board meeting. I don't think, I don't think she knew she was going to get a shout-out here, I think she was just interested. She might be a future board member, who knows? But we've got 20 students who are going to be spending two weeks in Rottweil, Germany, from June 15th to the 30th. Good multilingual education is meaningful multicultural experiences. You're learning, you're learning a new language that's building a bridge. We're going to have, we've got a partner school lined up, they're named Leibniz Gymnasium. They are hard at work right now, pairing our students with families in their community. They've had meetings in the evenings, and I know there was great interest, and they're really excited about some of the things that they're going to show our students about their region. They're planning on taking us to the Black Forest, which is nearby, down to Lake Constance. We'll fly into Zurich. It's exciting. Throughout this whole process, it's been important to me and the team to make this an experience that's accessible as well. So because our students are staying with host families, we've managed to keep the price down relatively, relatively well compared to some other programs, right? So our students are currently fundraising, and that's going well. And we've also gotten a very gracious donation from the Bensonville Foundation, so thank you to those that are on the foundation, Ms. Sylvia Hade and Juliette Regal, thank you so much. The kids are very grateful for that. And just to highlight, too, it's an exchange, that means we've got to reciprocate. So the great hospitality that our German hosts are going to show us, I hope that we've got some amazing Bensonville and Wood Dale hospitality in store for them, too. Our German students, they're excited to come over here, too. They've asked questions about maybe going to a football, an American football game, seeing, they're going to fly into New York, I think, for a few days, and then come to Chicago. One of them wants to play football, and so they're going to be in our community, walking through our halls, October 28th to November 11th. So hopefully, an email will go out to me, to the school community, asking if anybody is gracious enough to host one of our partner schools, and we'll, I'm sure we'll have lots of ideas for things to show them around our community. But not, aside from just the big exchange, that's a big event, right? We had 20 students, there was a waitlist for that. But we do it every day, too, in our classrooms. French, German, and Spanish classes, this is just one example. Our French classes, they've got a French PENPAL letter exchange, they're actually interacting with students across the globe in France. A few of them got Pokemon cards, right, from France, that are all in French. It's a good connection. So again, good multilingual education equals meaningful multicultural experiences. You don't have to go to Germany to do that, we're finding ways to do it here in our classrooms as well. And I'll wrap up, the school year is winding down, but we've got some good things on the horizon as well. I mentioned our parent groups are really strong, and again, another example of our multilingualism and multiculturalism in action. We're excited about next week. Our final parent group meetings will be held on Thursday, so we've got, it's going to be a celebration of Polish heritage. We've got a dance group lined up, we're going to have a Polish dinner that I'm excited about, and then Padres Unidos will have their meeting, their last meeting of the year as well, right after. And of course, our Kermez is going to be scheduled for next Saturday as well. Another example of how we celebrate our multiculturalism. Thank you.
Questions for the board.
What are you more excited for, May 4th or May 5th?
May 4th. I mean, I'm excited about everything, but May 4th, the tiebreaker is the food, right?
So you're saying that the Polish should be better than the...
Oh, no, you mean May 6th, the Kermez date?
Well, you said it was the 4th and the 5th on the thing up there.
Oh, sorry. Now, the 4th is, we're doing Polish Heritage, and then Padres Unidos the same night. The 6th, we're celebrating Cinco de Mayo, I guess, but that's on a Friday. I don't think there's anything scheduled that day, the Kermez is the 6th. So we've got, the 5th is that sandwich day in between.
Oh, I was reading the, our annual Kermez will be celebrated on Cinco de Mayo.
Oh, that's a tie, I'm sorry, that should be Saturday, the 6th. Yeah, you can't make, I don't think I can pick. I don't think I can pick. Yeah. Our German students will be there, they'll have a, our German exchange students will be there, they'll have a table. We're expanding the Kermez, too. We're going to have a number of organizations there with tables, so we're excited about that.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, so, next up is our equity report. And this is Mr. Mike Barago via video.
Hello, my name is Mike Barago, and this is your equity report. Let's kick off this report with our commemorative observances and holidays. Women's History Month was filled with celebrations. International Women's Day was the highlight of the month. In partnership with Bensonville District Two, we hosted a Young Women's Leadership Summit focused on empowerment. Eighth-grade students from Blackhawk joined us in the auditorium to listen to women leaders about their experiences as professionals. A big thank you goes out to Dr. Yvette Dubio, Dr. Katie McCluskey, Ellen Ward, and Ms. Leah Hurtado for providing invaluable insights to our future leaders that were sitting in the audience. A huge thank you goes out to the Bensonville Rotary for supporting the program. And lastly, a shout-out goes to Ms. Bray and Mrs. Swars of Bensonville District Two for helping make this event happen. Ms. Montano and student members of our Brave Club hosted a Lunch and Learn for Staff on April 11th. The learning event provided important insights into the experiences of LGBTQIA+ community, especially those who are students. Staff who attended learned about the positive impact of acknowledging pronouns, and how it's simple or minor gestures that adults can do to show support for the community and become a more inclusive classroom. The National Day of Silence was on April 14th. The yearly event is a national student-led demonstration where LGBTQIA+ students and allies all around the world and the country take a vow of silence to protest the harmful effects of harassment and discrimination of LGBTQ+ people in schools. Our Brave Club and allies kicked off the day with a peaceful sit-in. Staff members and students acknowledged and support, and supported the event by dressing in black. On April 19th, we hosted our first annual Fastathon. Learning through experience is powerful, and the Fastathon is a way for staff and students to learn about the experiences of students in our school who fast during Ramadan. The one-day fasting concluded with a celebration of Iftar, or breaking of the fast, where we ate dates and other traditional food. Big shout-out to our students and Ms. Regendran for helping with the planning and for the student-driven presentations that helped many of us learn more about Ramadan. and for the student-driven presentations that helped many of us learn more about Ramadan. That's a wrap for our equity report. Until next time, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is our principal, Dr. Benson, to preview our student code of conduct.
Okay, so thank you very much. So every year, we have what we call like a Code of Conduct Committee that meets. They have several meetings throughout the winter and spring. And so next board meeting, we could go to the next slide. The next board meeting, I'll present in detail basically what you will approve, I hope. Because then by, by the end of the May board meeting, then we need to get ready for the, the new handbook that obviously, you know, the students get in the fall, but it takes the whole summer to put together. So much like we do press policies for board policies that you review, press also comes with a recommended handbook. And so we reviewed that thoroughly this year. I'd like to thank Jason Mato and Pedro Castro for their leadership with the committee. There will be pretty simple adjustments to the school handbook. When you look at it, there's a couple Illinois statutes where now we have five mental health days that students can access throughout the school year, and also one day for a civic event that they can attend, whatever that civic event may be. So we obviously have to update the handbook for that. We also are changing some of our language when it comes to attendance, tardies, detentions, those types of things. Just simple rudimentary type changes. And also, we're gonna be talking a little bit about restorative practices, which we are including in our handbook. It's important that we highlight that, concepts of restorative circles, restorative groups, so that kids can learn from one another through, through, if there is some sort of conflict. And then also our in-school intervention program. We used to call it ISS, or In-School Suspension. We've changed that to In-School Intervention because we want that time to be valuable, where we can push in services for kids and hopefully get some supports if for some reason they're in, in school intervention. So again, next month, we'll have the whole list of everything, and then ask for your, your approval. And any questions?
You said five mental health days and one?
Civic, yeah. Civic event day. I don't know if that's really well-publicized, but these are Illinois statutes. And so it's sort of one of those things that we should include that in the handbook, just from an awareness standpoint.
They're, they're pretty specific on what a civic engagement, what qualifies for that and?
Right, exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's not like, not like a baseball game. That doesn't count.
I have to make sure of that.
Right. Civic, well, well, there's only one, so. But no, there's ways that, that we can ask for some verification or something if needed. But the mental health days is something that we have implemented, and some students have access to that when they need it, so.
Well, he kinda answered it on the fly there, that this is all mandated by the state, so there's really not a lot of options at this level.
Exactly. And so it's sort of perfunctory what we'll be doing, but we'll still go through it anyway. I don't think that there's anything that's, you know, earth-shattering. Sometimes these committees meet, and then there's a topic, and it's sort of a, a hot topic, and then there's usually a lot of discussion. But you'll get your opportunity next month. I don't anticipate anything out of the ordinary, though.
Follow-up question, on the, on the ISI that you're talking about. I know when I was in school, it basically meant that you were thrown into a room and told to be, sit down, shut up, and do nothing all day. I take it, is that what we do here, or are we doing a bit, are we doing something better than that, I'm hoping?
Well, yeah, we're, that's exactly right. That's why we're calling it more of an intervention, and we are working on that. You know, it's one of those things that, you know, during COVID, and some of those years, there was less in-school interventions, as, as we call them. But there, there's a need for that as, as in, you know, for whatever reason, for attendance reasons or some sort of classroom behavior. So we're, we're looking to review our curriculum in there and make sure that it is valuable time. Things like, are you accessing your Google Classroom and interact with teachers? I think we just even heard earlier that, that some teacher will actually go in and, and check on their students when they, when they're in there. We're not talking about, when we're talking about next year, we're not talking about super large number of students. But I think it's gonna be important that, that we utilize that time when, when they're, they're there, so.
So they're productive candidates?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I was also hearing all this great stuff about the, the counselors and the counseling that's offered there. I didn't know if they were engaged in, in this program, or if you guys were gonna be looking to?
Yeah, that, when I, when I, I should clarify when I say push in. So a lot of times what happens is you'll pull kids out for some reason.
Right.
But lack of a better term, it's sort of a captive audience, right? So you're there, so why not have the different service professionals go in as needed? So it makes more sense to do that than, than to take them out. So that's what we're looking to expand upon.
Fantastic. I'm glad that we evolved.
Yeah, we, that's right. That's right. Exactly.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to FOIAs, we received two FOIAs this month. One from Smart Procurement and one from Local Labs. This is a summary. Local Labs is a public records company. Local Labs is constantly collecting public records from federal, state governments, as well as local governments, departments and administration of all sizes. Their clients include the largest media companies in the US. This is all from their website. They're requesting copies of our mission statements. We provided to them, and that has been resolved, so that's all good. Next one is Smart Procurement. Smart Procurement is a company that works for the government agencies to aggregate purchasing data and make it accessible to the community of agencies for better purchasing power. This is also from their website. They requested information regarding our purchases, orders for this last quarter. They do this every quarter, so this is normal protocol for us. So those are the two FOIAs. Mr. Lewis, that's the end of our informational items.
Committee reports. Bensonville Community Foundation?
Do you want?
You can. So as was stated earlier, Sylvia and I went to the Bensonville Community Foundation, and one of the mini-grants that was requested from Fenton was for some money for the kids that are going to, to Germany. And we had asked for anywhere between five and ten thousand dollars to help offset the costs. And they were able to give us seventy-five hundred dollars, which was wonderful. We were very excited about that. What they're asking in return is for the kids to please send a video when they return that we could put up, that they could put up at the, well, I think at the board meeting, then also on the Village website, so that they can kind of show what, what they did with that money and, and all the fun places that they went, and so, as a sort of thank you. So we were very, very excited that they were willing to give Fenton and, and the kids that, that amount of money to offset those expenses, so we were very excited.
And it's important that we make sure that we do that because, you know, they've given grants, and when you don't come back and share, you know, what, what you've done, it makes it difficult to come back again and out. So we have to make sure that our students share, and they'll probably love to do that, so.
Yes, I'm sure. And I think it's good for the kids to, to, to?
Dominika agrees. She's right there again. Round of applause for her still being here.
But I think it's also very good for the kids to be appreciative of, of what has been given to them by our community. So that's good for them. Also, there is a grant in, or not a grant, a scholarship that kids here at Fenton in the tune of seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's the Fred Lewis Scholarship. So, and that is given by the Bensonville Community Foundation. I still think there may be time for kids to go ahead and still fill out that scholarship application. So I'm sure the counseling department has been helping kids with that if, if they need to. So, but you must be a participant in music in order to receive that scholarship.
Very good. I see Dr. Karanda over there writing that scholarship down. Thank you, Dr. Karanda. Now, you shout out to Sylvia and Juliette for working with other taxing bodies. What folks know, just to reiterate, the composition of the Bensonville Foundation's are taxing bodies, usually board members. And it's just another exemplary way of how we work together with the Village. Dominika's gonna remind Mr. Rubio when they're in Germany, because we want it in German and in English, for the thank you, and a, a nice video thanking the Bensonville Foundation, as well as the taxing bodies, as well as the city of Bensonville. I think that would, that would do it. A nice two, three, four-minute video would be fantastic. Once again, thank you.
And did you have anything else to add, Sylvia? I'm sorry.
No, no, that was fine. We did great.
Quick question. Was that grant with any stipulation for needs-based disbursement, or is it just a, you know, however we see fit?
Was, it was, it was to offset the cost of?
No, which one are you talking about? Are you talking about the?
The seventy-five hundred.
Oh, the, oh.
No, it was just to offset the kids' expenses, so however it is seen fit to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Board DEI committee?
Nothing to report, with the exception of we have a new member of the DEI committee.
No, no. Next month, maybe. Maybe next year.
Not next.
No, next month, probably gonna have something.
All right. Board Finance Facilities Committee?
You want me to review that real quick? So earlier on, at six o'clock, we had a finance facilities meetings. There were five important agenda items. I'll just go through them real quick. The STEMWing projection rendering was explained by our architect, S.T.R., as well as the debt certificate timeline process with Bruce Martin and Rob Grossi. What is this all about? The boards gave us the green light pretty much to move forward to the STEMWing project. And next month, they will take a vote in regards to the debt certificate, up to thirty-two million dollars. The third item was the Gilbein contract, which was approved this evening. Gilbein contract is the construction manager that will take the lead for us in regards to the water mitigation and the STEMWing project. Then there was an update with the water mitigation update. There were two items there, the Stormwater Detention System bid, which was approved this evening as well, which is basically the big tank that goes underneath our fields, including our stadium there to, to try, to resolve our flooding, our flooding issue here at Fenton. Also, we purchased a field turf proposal, which was discussed at six o'clock and approved at the seven o'clock meeting here. Basically, we're having a new turf field for soccer and football, as well as a new track surface as well. Now, once again, this is just not extracurricular, okay? It's also academic for our PE classes, our band, just walking around for our students, whether they're regular or special ed students or ELL students, and we're opening it up to the community as well. And lastly, we talked about academic life skills classroom modification. These, these are for our NetSec special ed students. Their population is growing, and they need a larger facility.
Thank you, James. Board Policy Committee?
Nothing to report.
I S B delegate?
I have nothing to report. Didn't forget this time.
Just like to say thank you to Kit and Juliette for their service to this. Lynn?
Lynn, real quick, nothing to report from last month. Our next meeting is this Friday at eight AM, and I will be attending.
And next?
We got a busy month. April, we got our operational board meeting. Like usually, we're talking about insurance. We're talking about negotiations, and I was part of it, so. It was hard. It has been settled down. I cannot say anything until Monday, but it's wonderful to be part of that thing.
Great. Next board meeting, new business? Our next board meeting, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM, was a tentative Board Finance Facilities Committee meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at six PM. Next, closed session?
You have to read that whole thing out yet.
Yes, the fun part. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed. It shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this Article Five, Illinois CS one twenty-two C one. Also, for the purpose of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary, schedules for one or more classes of employees, Article Five, Illinois CS one twenty-two, C two.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Rego? Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
I almost abstained on that.
Back in open session?
I move to adjourn.
Have motion, second to adjourn.
We got it.
We already got it, yeah. I moved in the second, yeah.
Motion passed.
Ready roll call those.
Rego?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Kovac?
Abstain.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
You really want me to put you down?
No, I want to say yes. Motion passed. Good night.